It's 6:30, it's a little bit past 6:30. So I will open the select board meeting here for this evening, Monday, August 5th, and we'll take vote call attendance. Jeff?
Yeah.
Kathy?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Ann?
Not here, but present.
Fair enough. And John?
I'm gonna remove somebody.
Was that Jim? Was that your tech person?
Yeah, my tech person is up to you for a minute.
He's in the server room.
I think it's okay.
Okay, good. Are you gonna chair this, or do you want me to chair this, Ann?
You're present, you should do it.
Okay, fine. Great, okay. So all are present or here and accounted for, and we've got an ambitious agenda here to start with. I'll ask for a chairman's report if there is any, Ann.
She froze.
I was going to say she froze.
Thank God Jim was on that.
I'll take that as a no. Okay, yeah. I'm not sure what's happening. She can't hear anything.
Unfrozen.
Okay. Okay, Ann, I was asking for a chairman's report if there is any.
No.
Okay, fine. Including a Mariner's report, that's all fine, that's fine. Okay. All right, good. Then I will go, I guess, probably to the action items. That's next on the agenda here.
So there was one action item that I think fell off the list that I would ask that we add back on, and that's the update on Ocean Street. So we did submit the grant application, but I think we need to leave it on the action item list until we hear back as to whether or not we got the grant. Because then we'll have a decision to make. So is that like in the September timeframe, Greg, or?
Um, yeah, it could be, it could be as late as November.
Okay. Do I split the time into October and do a check on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I did see, I think all of us saw an email from Chuck Dan, maybe within the past week, just acknowledging that there was, it had been filed.
Right, it had been filed, but we still don't know what the outcome is. That's why I would ask that we put that in the report.
So put that on October?
Yeah, as soon as we hear.
In October, okay. That would be good. Any other additions or omissions? The action item list. Okay. There being none? All right. Let's move along to the first item on our agenda, which is always great, we have a new police officer.
We do.
Yay!
Chief, could you invite us?
So, yeah, thanks everyone for being here tonight. And Chelsea, if you wanna step up to the front?
Yes, sir.
So this is Officer Chelsea Riley. She's our newest full-time police officer. She graduated the academy about a week ago. But has been here, working for, since 2016. She started here as a full-time dispatcher, a reserve police officer, and now a full-time police officer. Chelsea currently serves the department as a member of her overdose and mental health outreach team, and is a certified EMT. She's a graduate of Rockford High School, class of 2009. She holds an associate's degree in criminal justice from North Shore Community College. And most recently, like I just said, she graduated the Linfield Police Academy, the fifth ROC. But she was ranked number three in her class out of 74 recruits. The overall BPA of 95.92, and the top three were separated by just a half a percent. So, good job. So normally, we would have a pinning ceremony, but Chelsea's family pinned her at the academy. So we're gonna skip that tonight. But I just want Diane, that's our town clerk, to come up and take her full-time loss.
Chelsea, do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge to perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a duly-appointed police officer for the town of Manchester by the seat in accordance with the bylaws of the town, the laws of the government, and the Constitution of the United States? Yeah.
Congratulations and welcome again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congrats. Just wanna say thanks to the board for allowing us this, to have this ceremony.
Thank you. Excellent.
Don't know if it'd pause, John, for any public comments.
Oh, I omitted that there. You know, was that?
Yeah, it wasn't listed.
Unlisted. I'm listing it now. Okay. Any public comments or any items that are not on the agenda that anyone here would like to comment on? Either in the room or online?
Not seeing any.
Okay, great. Okay, second order of business this evening, a National Grid hearing. So I see a familiar face. The National Grid, and we do have some information here, but yes. Please, if you yourself.
You want a motion?
Oh, excuse me, I guess we need to have a motion to open the, open the public hearing.
Okay, I move that the select board open a public hearing on the petition of National Grid to install underground facilities on Arabella Street and Rosedale Avenue.
Second.
Ryan?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And John says yes. Okay. All right, the hearing is open. Can you describe a little bit about what's gonna be going on in Arabella?
We'll be upgrading some conduits in order to upgrade the services in that area, well, the feed to the services in that area.
Any questions or comments? I know a good deal of information was distributed to us.
Will you be digging up any driveways, or is it just on the street?
In the street.
Just on the street.
Is it just, is, any other questions?
What was the triggering event that caused the need for this?
There were a few houses that had upgraded their services.
Okay. So basically, customer request caused the need for this. Okay.
Anything, Ryan?
No.
Ann?
No. Karen Bennett has her hand up.
Okay.
There's a question, want you to get to it.
Okay, Karen is in that neighborhood, I know that.
Hi. Karen Bennett, 28 Lincoln Street, right outside where this is happening. I talked to a couple of the neighbors. We just have a few questions that would like to get answered. Can you tell me when the work is starting?
We won't know that until after this petition hearing. And then it will go on the schedule.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, it's hard to hear you.
Within the next few weeks. It's not on the schedule yet. It depends on how this hearing goes.
Okay, and could you tell me the hours of work?
During the day?
Hours that you'll be doing the work on the street?
During the day, between probably eight and two.
And any night work, since you called out day?
We're not scheduling any night work or discipline the job.
Okay, and about how long will this take?
A day to two.
Okay. Uh, any impact to service?
There might be a short outage if we cannot swap it over.
Okay, because I've got everything on that. So will you be giving us a notification of that prior?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and what are you doing? The work is right outside my driveway and the person's next door's driveway. Could you tell me if we're gonna be able to get in and out of our driveways during the work?
Um, should still be able to. We are digging up that in order to install conduits.
No, I understand, but I'm trying to understand if I'm gonna be able to get in and out of my driveways.
Not while they're working, probably not.
Okay, that's gonna definitely be an issue. Um, has anyone thought from the town about rerouting trucks that go down Arabella? Because we have big 18-wheelers going around, and there's gonna be a lot of trucks that are not gonna be able to make the corner. We could also have some type of non-park, no parking there, right where the corner is. Otherwise, parking will happen, and then they're gonna be disrupted for doing their work.
Would you be in touch with, is there gonna be a detail involved in this? I assume there will. Okay. Is that a topic of discussion at the detail, to figure out how all of this is gonna fit together?
It will be when we enter the point of schedule.
Okay, I think that's important.
Yes.
It's only one day, I understand, but it can be a tough day.
Yeah, I want to too, but I just need to know in advance which day I'm gonna be installing my home and not be able to leave.
Would you be providing a notification to the residents that are affected if it's affecting driveways? I assume you will.
At the time that.
Inform them in advance and say, yeah, you won't have access?
At the time of scheduling.
Yes, okay.
And you're not going under the driveways, you're just anywhere near the driveway asphalt that we have. You're just on the street, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, Karen. Other questions, comments? All right. I'll look for a motion to close the evidentiary portion.
I move that the select board close the evidentiary portion of the public hearing.
Second.
Ryan?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And John says yes. Okay. Good.
Thank you.
Then I will propose a motion that the select board approve the National Grid's petition to install underground facilities on Arabella Street and Rosedale Avenue with the stipulations proposed by the Director of Public Works.
Second.
Any further discussion on that topic? Ryan?
Good, yes.
Kathy, Jeff? Kathy?
Yeah.
Ann?
Nothing for me.
Okay. I guess that was a vote.
I should be, don't you?
All right. We're set.
Okay. Before I go, I'd like to introduce my replacement. Going forward, this is Nick Angelo, and he will be taking place with me with the city town. Sorry, yeah.
Does it involve this particular project? In other words, is this like starting tomorrow? Or?
I'm not leaving right away, but he is the engineer for this project going forward.
Okay. All right.
Welcome.
Welcome, Ann. I'm sorry to see you.
I, of course, work along with Sabita, so if you guys have any other questions too, you can always get ahold of her, as well as me, if anything, too. Moving forward, any concerns whatsoever, you can always address me, as well as Sabita, and we can definitely take care of that if need be, so. It's a pleasure.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. I miss your smile.
Okay. Great. Item three on our agenda. Oh, let's see, we got another one?
Oh, yes.
No, we don't need to move anything yet, okay, all right. An item we've seen before, pickleball. Let's see, I think.
It's a little early, do we wanna pull?
Oh, is this, what have we got here?
Six pickleball.
Six forty-five, so we definitely got it.
You've got five minutes to kill. Okay. Let's move down to the consent agenda here. You all have the listing here. Any comments on anything with regard to, what, there are six items on the consent agenda?
I think I'd like to pull out the committee board reappointments till after we do those other interviews and appointments. I'm getting confused between the two items.
All right, side by side, UTV. What is a UTV? I know an ATV. What's a UTV?
Utility.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Anything else that should get pulled out other than B? It's got the consent agenda. That's me.
There you go.
All right. Nothing else pending here then? I move that the select board approve the consent agenda with the exception of item B, meaning reappointments.
Second.
Any other discussion? Ready to vote? Ryan?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And John votes yes. Okay, so that takes care of the consent agenda and two minutes. Okay. Other things that we might be able to deal with either?
Liaison updates.
Liaison updates, we can go to that.
I don't have any. Somebody else might.
Okay.
I would, but I think Cheryl can speak.
Cheryl's probably on the agenda for you. Okay, Jeff? Any comments in regard to liaisons?
Well, three of us are at the planning board meeting, so I think we're gonna have approval for the situation.
On the, on the?
Pierre, Stan, it looks like it's moving.
Yeah, so it's gone to a draft, whatever conditions.
Okay, all right.
It's moving along.
Okay, all right, that's encouraging.
Yeah, on that, it's moving.
Okay, that's, that's fine. As regards to me, one of my items is on the agenda this evening with regard to council's late evening status situation. DPW, nothing. I will say that with regard to the festival this past Saturday, we had three topics that we suggested for discussion, the NBTA, rezoning, Reed Park, and water meters. We did have some DPW questions because we had a category other. And most of the other questions were kind of DPW-related that affected most residents with regard to sidewalk issues, traffic issues, landscape, bush issues that were blocking things, et cetera. I'll say most of those questions were DPW-related, and I interface with DPW and will send messages to Chuck with regard to those comments. So, and that's the only report that I have. This is what will be covered in our agenda. And it's now ten o'clock.
Good job, James.
Pickleball, Cheryl?
Hi. You all should have received the sound baffling report. So that report was done after the installation of the sound panels. So I'm here on behalf of the Parking Rec Committee and myself, and Muffin is here as the chairman of the Parking Rec Committee, because in the March 18th meeting, your board voted for us to limit the hours of the pickleball courts from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. until we could get the soundproofing panels up, which we have done, and did the sound testing. And the sound testing did show that the sound was brought down by about 16 decibels. So I'm here to ask to have those hours reinstated and to allow the volunteers to stop locking and unlocking the courts and have the courts kind of go along with every other recreational area and town of being no gates or locks on it. But if there's any issues after hours, it would be a call to the police.
Questions or comments? Everybody has read the report?
I swam by a number of times over the course of the weekend. And I just swam by after work now. And I can tell you, there's more traffic noise than there is anything coming from pickleball courts. And, I mean, middle of the day on Saturday. Yeah, I just, when I left around 2:00, 2:30. I don't think, I, there was, the pickles, the courts weren't being used much. Could be the weather related, could be too hot, it could be whatever. But, no, I was, I struggled to hear noise coming off the pickleball court. So I was quite pleased.
I haven't been at the courts, but I've driven by them several times. It really looks like tennis courts that have screens, wind screens.
Yeah.
Same sort of thing. And there's usually a gap in the windscreen somewhere so you can see what's going on, and you can hear.
Right, right.
So I think it's good. I think the screens don't detract per se from what's going on.
Exactly.
Record for.
The delay from May to July enabled us to get the green, as opposed to if we rushed it from May, they weren't gonna be able to make the green, so.
Of course.
Actually, a good news, bad news thing, I think it turned out much better.
Yeah.
I mean, it blends a lot better.
Yeah.
So it's, but it looks good. And I do see the results. In terms of the results, the recordings, you've just got a max and a min there. I assume that, you know, it's not necessarily weighted. You just have the, this is the high, the loudest, and this was the softest.
To me, not being a sound specialist, that's what I wanted to see. I think there is a little bit more in the report, but, you know, that was like summary seems to be the most important.
So the minimum was when there were six courts in play?
Yeah, you said they were six.
Right.
You did this for about 20 minutes or so. Duration was about 20 minutes. And that would've been all, when all six were there? Right. Yes.
So the minimum still had, it wasn't no use or?
Oh, oh, no, no, I understand that.
I just, I just wanted to clarify that.
So we had actually asked people to come down and play because we wanted to make sure we had four people on each court because we really wanted to see the maximum.
Sure, good idea.
Noise. So we even asked the same people to come back and be on the same courts so that, you know, we could keep that part of the.
Taking out the variables.
Right, exactly, taking as many variables as possible out.
Okay. Good. Any other questions or comments in regard to the pickleball situation?
Just a curious question. I think it's a great solution that you guys implemented. I think it's working great. Given the enthusiasm around pickleball, it's probably a question for Greg. If people do stay beyond the, you know, hours, what is the, how is that handled? What is the consequence for that? I mean, we had people climbing over the fence at one point, so we got an enthusiastic crowd. And so I'm trying to think ahead. And suppose people are so enthusiastic, they stay past when they're supposed to? So what, what happens?
So the police are unnoticed, they try to cruise by if they can. If a neighbor notices that it's being used past hours, they should, they should call the police. And they will come by and tell people to stop playing.
And the camera is back up as well, which is there. So if the police get a call, they can check the camera. Say, oh.
They have a speaker, get off the court.
People are watching.
Yeah, just so they don't have to get up, you know.
I think there is, but it's only from the, from the phones that they could use it.
I hope that doesn't become an issue. But it just have to happen.
I think the timing's pretty good because the sunsets are now before 8:00 o'clock, not after 8:00 anymore, so.
Yeah, so that'd be less. Yeah.
Well, there's also.
Go ahead, Ann.
There's also before, in the morning, early in the morning.
Right. So once we have the hours.
And.
Sorry. So once we have the set hours. No, this is not working, is it? We've hesitated on having the hours on permanent signs because we've changed them so much over time. So once it is set, it will have some new signs also reminding people. When it's not believed.
Good. Great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, I will.
I, I'd like to, one more comment. If there is a consistent problem with people showing up too early or staying too late, I think we ought to review it probably at our next meeting, see how many complaints there have been in that form, and reconsider locking the courts if, if it's a consistent problem. Because it's very, if I were a neighbor, I would be very annoyed if I had to call the police and the police came out and, you know, we've had problems with the police. So I just like to have an opportunity to review this, the locking, a lot more time.
So I think you could put that as an action item, like a month out, not two weeks, make it a month. I think it's good.
Let's, let's check it two weeks, because.
All right, you want?
And, and then we may need to check it again, but it doesn't take long.
She advocated for him.
Apparently. Okay, good. Any other comments from the board? All right, then I will seek.
What about the public?
Seek a, all right. Public, it's not a public hearing, but I can ask. Any questions or comments from the public about pickleball?
Let's play.
I hope you have been.
I just have one. I'm Joana Ross, One Windavere Park, Estancia. If you're gonna be tracking the phone calls that, if you get phone calls from the neighbors that people are on the courts early or late, will the police be the ones making the record of that? And they'll go down and check that someone's actually on the court? Okay, because I've heard that there's been some false accusations. I just want to make sure that the police are seeing somebody at the court early and then having that interaction with them to say, okay, this is number one, this is number two. Just want to make sure that the numbers are real. And then my second question is just, I think it would be a good idea to, in the future, and I, hopefully we don't have any more construction there or anything like that, but just to have a set schedule when the courts open in April or May or whatever it is, and when they close in November or December. And then if the hours are shifting, just so it's not up for debate for neighbors to think that that's always like an open topic. Because I understand the construction was causing the shifting in the hours. But it appears that this is no longer gonna be a topic. Pickleball in general should no longer be a topic. The money has been spent, the sound, you know, mitigation's successful. Doesn't sound like there needs to be any more discussions if there's one or two people that are upset about it. So I guess I'm just looking for affirmation that that's true. And then secondly, if there's a schedule that can be put out that says the courts open April 1st, these are the hours. It moves to these hours July 1st. It moves to these hours November 1st, whatever it is. I don't ever know that, but just asking for a little bit more like firmness around it so that we don't have to address it all the time.
Well, Cheryl, you'll put together appropriate signage with regard to times and hours and that sort of thing. I don't know if there's much seasonally is there?
Right, we could reduce the hours as the sun sets, but I think we'll just stick with the 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. with no lights. It will take care of itself. But yeah, it's April 1st to December 1st, give or take. Usually say the first week of April to the first week of December just in case weather doesn't allow it.
Well, the nets are down for three months, or four months, I guess.
Right.
So it'll take care of itself. Okay.
Did we discuss the, is the, are the panels coming down? Are they up?
They'll come down for the off-season. Yeah, just to help keep them under.
Are they, are they certified all-weather, or we're doing that? I mean, is that recommended by the manufacturer?
It is.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah.
How, how long do they last, just for curiosity?
No, I have my guy on the call, just in case, but I think it's 10 years. Elliot, are you there?
That fat will be gone by then.
Yes, hi, Cheryl.
Hi, can you confirm how long the panels should last?
They should last five years. We're ready for a five-year lifespan. Beyond five years, it's really hard to conduct endurance tests and anticipate wear, so that's, that's pretty standard for the industry.
Well, I understand we're at the leading edge here, and you can't do stability testing in real time.
It just started, yeah.
Yeah, in real time. We are, we are the stability test.
And by taking them down four months of the year, that extends the life a little bit, so.
Yes.
I'm pretty sure, pretty confident we'll be able to stretch it to at least 10.
Okay, good. Well, I'm hoping.
I mean, I will be here talking.
There'll be someone else who's headed.
Do you want a motion?
Okay. I will seek a motion. I am seeking.
All right. I move that the board return the hours of use of the pickleball courts from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. and stop locking and unlocking the gates effective immediately.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this topic? Ready to vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And John votes yes. Good. We're set with that. And we're dealing with time again.
Sorry, I did have three pages I was gonna read, but I told Brian, and he said keep it short, so I didn't read it.
Well, you may. Well, you may, you may.
Oh, for real? Okay.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm looking at.
I may be redundant, but.
No, take the win, Cheryl.
That was a hot topic.
Snatching defeat, defeat out of the draws of victory.
All right, I'm looking to see, we've got quite a bit of time here.
So perhaps we could clarify the item that I requested be removed from the consent agenda. So on the committee board reappointments, you did get a very large package with lots of applications. Could you clarify what was intended to be in the consent agenda? Because we have other interviews we're doing at seven thirty. So what, what am I supposed to be looking at for that?
Yeah, there should have been a.
There should be that one page.
One little page with two people that I missed for reappointments.
Yes.
Yeah, it was.
Tell me what changes.
Yeah.
So there's two, two people.
Affordable Housing Trust, Sarah Melish as a FinCom rep and the Community Preservation Committee, Joseph Ella from the Historic District.
Right.
Those ones were missed off the list that I.
Okay.
May I speak in?
Yeah, they're.
I'm sorry.
They're, they're different from the others in that they are appointments specific to an elected committee and they've been recommended by their committees to serve. So that's different from just, I've been on two terms and I want to contribute.
Right, that's that term sensitive.
Okay. Don't worry about on that.
Yeah, all right.
And then, excuse me, this attachment Ann that you sent out, are those like all the other openings that you could fill with?
Yes, those, yeah, she passed it on. Yep. Those points openings.
Okay, yeah, that's right to you, Jeff. All right, good. So I will look for a, a motion to approve the committee board reappointments from the consent agenda. Would somebody like to make a motion on that?
So moved.
Okay. Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And John says yes. Okay, so we're set with the consent agenda, that's done. Let's see here, we've got, what is not timed?
Town administrator.
The town administrator quarter, I'm trying to read the left lines here. Town administrator. I guess we can do that, Greg?
Yeah, just some quick updates for you.
Review.
Well, you could do the review or do you want my report?
Well, I'll take your report first and then.
Yeah, again, just quickly here, so you've got to talk about the possibility of a, of a second cycle out in front here. Reached out to the landscape architect who did that redesign. We're hoping that we can get an hour of his time to help us recommend this location. So we hope to do that in the next week or two, if any luck. So that's underway. Second item, you had heard about some of the on-water challenges that we had in San Dala Cove. We did the on-water concert and there was an after-action meeting of the various public safety folks who, who managing the, the day on water. Both Brian and Kathy were able to attend that. I think there was a good discussion about some next steps. And one of those next steps will be for the HAC, the Harbor Advisory Committee, to craft new permitting process for on-water events. So they'll be working on that, I think, pretty soon here. We hope to meet, we can give a draft to you.
You know that. You know when that meeting is, Greg?
The HAC meeting?
Yeah.
I don't know that off the top of my head.
I think that what Carl said is they weren't scheduled until September and he was trying to make some phone calls and try to drag them into.
Yeah, they were hoping to have one before September.
So I don't think the, I don't think the date is set at this point.
I, I thought that it was going to be Thursday. Might be.
Well, we can let you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, let us, let us find out. We'll confirm with Carl and Brian, fire and let you know what's happening.
Okay, great.
And then just.
Actually, there's a Harbor Advisory Committee meeting posted for Wednesday. Wednesday, August seventh, six PM. It's on the calendar.
Okay.
Thank you for looking.
Yep, and that's on the agenda. The San Dala Cove regulations is on the agenda.
Okay, great.
All right, and then lastly, just an update on the MTA zoning. You know, we are awaiting the review by the state. We should hear from them hopefully mid-September. And in the meantime, they, the, the task force and the planning board will be meeting to look at the possibilities of modifying the one zone that encompasses Pine Street with the Newport Park area in case the state kicks Newport Park out as, as being eligible to be in the district. They did not kick it out on their first review, so we're optimistic that it'll stay, but there's a possibility upon second review, they might kick that out.
When you say first review, when was that conducted or?
Well, so the, the state provided every town, all hundred and fifty-something towns, seventy-five, whatever that number is. They provided all the towns with maps that excluded various properties. Municipal properties, education-oriented properties, et cetera. Land, you know, land with conservation restrictions, that sort of thing. But they did not kick out, as I, restrict or exclude is the word I'm looking for, the Newport Park land. So unless that was an oversight, we're hopeful that we're on, on sound ground to include it. So we'll wait and hear from them, but in the meantime, they will be looking at some substitutes for that land, about five or six acres that would need to be substituted in if, if indeed the state decided that was not eligible lands. The second piece here is that our town planner, Mark Resnick, has been able to secure funding from Mass Housing Partnership to conduct that propensity for development study, which is an analysis of the likelihood of development to take place with the new zoning. And, and so that study will get underway in the next few weeks and we hope to have that back in hand again about the same time the state's review should be done. So we should hope to have that in mid-September. And with, with that study in hand, we can do a fiscal analysis of the impacts of that kind of level of development that the first study will identify as being most likely.
Okay.
Have we formally requested that FinCom do that analysis yet or?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure where that's at. I'll, I'll double check. I know that Mark was going to follow up with them.
They might be able to get started on it and then just adjust the numbers when that change percentage comes in, right?
Yes, we talked about that and I'll just have to follow, see if Mark has had that conversation.
Good, right. So that's moving along and.
Yes.
All right, that's, that's good. Why don't we, let's see, let's, you know, that, so let's move back up to. What do we review? No, I think that's got, that's a special town meeting. I don't think that has a time constraint.
Is it eight fifteen?
I, I think eight fifteen is for, that's a special town meeting, right?
And eight-ten for the town meeting day.
Oh, this, oh, this, you're right. A line across here, you're right.
That never happens.
We usually are not ahead.
And a very efficient meeting, John.
Very efficient here.
I'm going to, I'm going to be minimal, skirmish.
Sorry, that's what someone brought me with peppermint. I'm sorry.
A disappointment, huh? Life's a poor disappointment. Okay. Yeah, you gotta sit and wait.
We'll be ready till seven thirty?
Anything else?
Could we discuss the transition timeline, independent of the review? That seemed like something less likely to be.
I think I've pretty safe ground on that.
Can we, can, can we do that then?
Yeah, I think that would be fine. So I did prepare for your, for your review, a tentative timeline for recruiting a new town administrator. And so it starts off basically now, starting to collect information from, from department heads in particular. We could do a survey of boards and perhaps citizens as well to get a better sense of what skill set that people are looking for. Perhaps areas that I'm not quite as strong in and that you may want to find someone new that has, that has a strength, depending on those skills that you identify. And also talk about the specific challenges you feel are going to be on the docket in the next, you know, the next, next few years moving, moving ahead. So I showed that happening during August and September. And then in September, we would go through the procurement process of soliciting proposals from recruiting firms, select a recruiter in October. The recruiter would typically hold meetings with you and perhaps with staff as well as we could hold some roundtable discussions with citizens as well, collecting that information that we started to collect, but they would want to collect some of that themselves. And they would put together then a position profile, which typically gives an overview of the town, a little bit of history, some of our finances, and talk about some of the challenges that you have identified as needing to be addressed as well as any particular skill sets that, that you feel are, are critical in, in the position, for the position.
So that's a consolidation of what's in the first line plus what this person would be.
But the recruiter, Greg, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So that would basically take us through November. Typically, you would form a preliminary screening committee. So this would be a committee of, of citizens, perhaps a couple of staff members. And they would do the first round of screening. And you usually do it with a screening committee on a preliminary basis so that those who are first interviewed and reviewed remain confidential. So that, that process is not public in terms of public meetings and public reviews of those resumes. Protect the confidentiality of folks who may not make it to the final, final round. And so that's how you use that screening committee. And so the screening committee and then the recruiter typically then would present to, say, three finalists that would then be prepared to, to be interviewed in a public session with, with all of you and if you wanted the recruiter with you to help with that. So we'd form the committee, we'd be advertising first of the year in January, use the month of January to collect resumes and then begin the screening process. And then come February, have those, those preliminary interviews and make the selection of the finalist for you come February. And then in February, then in March, I'm sorry, I'm showing the interviews, the preliminary interviews would be in February. And then in March, you would do year-round of interviews for the three finalists, make a selection by the first of April. Have contract negotiations and certainly by the end of April, have June and July as, as sort of the transition period for the new person. So they need probably a couple of months before they're able to come on board. And that would bring the new person on board basically a year from now. So that's a typical timeline. Obviously, it could be consolidated a little bit if you, if you wanted to. But it also, we, we have the time, so it's, it's nice to have, to take that time sometimes. So.
How do we go about putting the committee together? Do we ask people to move it? Do we?
Right, so typical, typical process would, would be to announce the, the formation of the committee that you're accepting volunteers, names of people who would like to be considered. And then you would, you can do some of recruiting of your own as well. And then you would pick typically five to seven people served on a selection committee. So, so, something like that.
Yeah.
Do you have any discussion with the, so I think the elements are all here. I'm wondering why we have to wait until January to advertise. Sometimes people do a lot of soul searching or take vacation time over the holidays and I'm just wondering if there's any value in posting earlier or if that, you really, people, you know, have those kind of thoughts over the holidays and it's best to post in January.
You could start earlier, but I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't end it.
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't end it earlier. I'm just wondering if there's any value in posting.
It could be just so to get people thinking about it, as you said, over the holidays. But a lot of people aren't paying attention during the holidays too. And that's, so that's why they suggest not having your main recruiting period, advertising period over the holidays. But if you want to have it, you know, start it in December and have it go until the end of January, that's perfectly fine.
Yeah, I guess I've always, it depends, I guess, what industry you're in. I've always found that a lot of, you know, company, they have people in the private sector, you know, they may take vacation between Christmas and New Year's and they're free to think.
Yes.
And plan their next step and it was curious.
I'm, I'm curious about this market. Is this a very fluid market or is this going to be tough? Or you speak with your colleagues?
It's a tight market right now. There's a lot of people retiring, so there's a lot of, lot of vacancies.
So that's tough.
So that makes it tough. There's a, a lot of new people that are being hired. So there are, there are younger people who are, who don't have experience but are interested. They may be an assistant someplace who would, would see this as an opportunity. But it just varies, you know, so, so this was attractive to me because of a family situation and I was ready for a change. So it, it worked out, right? So you can get lucky and that happens. It's, it's always hard to predict. But in general, it's fair to say that it's a pretty tight market.
To that point, were you looking?
Was I looking? I had, yes, I was, I was ready to make the change. There's always someone who look, ready to make a change. It's.
The other reason, isn't that?
Super, you know, superintendents of schools and town managers are, you know, five years is a typical stay.
You're over time.
What is that municipal symposium or that you go to in January? You invited us a couple times.
The MMA annual meeting.
MMA annual meeting.
And trade show, yes.
You know when that is this year?
It's right around the tw- third week of January every year.
That would be good for us to go to.
Third, third, it's typically around the twentieth of January. This year, they're, they're at a new venue. They're no longer at the Heinz. They're going to be at the convention center in the Seaport.
Oh, wow. That's huge.
Seaport in January, seriously?
I go there twelve months of the year, so yes, the boat show's in January now, so.
Is this sort of activity? Is this sort of activity done at that meeting, do you know?
No.
Oh, yes.
There's some conversations.
Conversation, yes.
Oh, yeah, it's formal, it's formal.
Is there, there's not formal recruiting going on?
No, 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 just conversations.
But there's, but there's conversations.
Of course, okay. See, I would be interested in knowing. Exactly. I would, I would be very interested in knowing when those dates are, if they're already set, or if you know, if you could.
Yeah, it's set, I can, I can get you those dates.
I would love to know because last year I missed it because I planned my vacation already and if I know when the dates are, I plan around it.
Yeah, no, they shut the date.
Okay, that'd be awesome.
Get to that information.
Again, I still have to ask, you've got your vacation from the county, how does that work?
I go on a trip. Someplace warm.
Can we rephrase it then?
Every day?
Twenty-third to the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-third, January twenty-third to the twenty-fifth. Okay. And last question, I, yeah. Had you ever conducted a three sixty review?
Yes.
Okay, like something fairly recent that, because that could be used as input. I guess, how long ago was that maybe?
Yeah, it's been a while.
Okay, because I don't remember participating in that. So you're looking for feedback on skill, and that might be one way to collect feedback from a wide variety of participants.
Yes.
Just a, just a, not a mandatory, just a thought.
Are there ever, um, you know, given the market and what's going on and I'm, you know, we're not sure where the search is going, are there interim, interim people that sometimes fill in six months that are shot or something?
Yes, there are. Yes, yes. Given the time we have here, hopefully we avoid that.
Oh, yes, that's right.
But that does happen, it happens frequently. Normally, I mean, when someone leaves, they don't, they don't give, you know, a year's leave time typically.
No.
You know, somebody's taking on a new job, so. You know, if somebody gives a couple of months notice, then typically you, you need to get an interim. So that, that is, that often happens, and there are people out there who, who do interim gigings, for sure.
Okay. I, I mean, it may be that we will identify someone, but they're not available till, I don't know, first of the year or something like that.
Right.
I, I, if we, if we start advertising in December, um, just to get the word out that there is an opening coming, without closing it all, I, we, I do hope we can find somebody permanent by August. Because our last experience with an interim was sick not.
Oh, did, did we have one at one time back?
Yeah.
Okay. It's, it's got to be difficult with an interim, I mean, for them to try and get up the speed and, and they're out, it's hard.
Right, they're, just, just sort of keep, keep things in motion, but not.
No, no, I understand. Okay. Well, thank you for sharing this, this timeline.
So if you have some comments, you know, mark it up and let me know, but. Tweet it in.
I think it, I think it looks good, the sooner the better, but you could certainly let us know what's, what's happened and.
How much overlap does this leave between you and, and a new person?
Yeah, I, I can be flexible on that. It depends on how, how much time you want and how much the new person would like. Again, that varies a lot. You know, some, some prefer sort of a clean break and very little overlap, you know, a day or so, whereas others may prefer a, a month or more. It depends. I would say the majority are probably on the former rather than the latter and.
I would say shorter is usually better for everybody involved.
Yeah, it's a clean break and it gets, the person needs to establish herself from the get-go, so.
Okay, good. All right, well, I think everyone here on the, on the board, we ought to, we ought to take this and any comments that we have over the next two weeks, I would be going to consolidate it into that. But I think it's a fairly, fairly complete roadmap.
Good, okay, good.
Great, so.
We can start any time thinking about a search command, right?
Yeah, I was looking at it, it looked, it looked like you're targeting November for the formation. We may want to put on our action item list, discussion period, just to, or do you want, you know, how do you want to do that? You know, do you want us to send you nominations? Do you want, you said, I, I think a little more detail around that piece because November, you know, holiday time, people are really busy, so we may want to think about what the steps are.
Yeah, you know, start early in November or late October.
Yeah.
Or we can, we can craft a, the mission statement or, or job description, if you will, for, for the committee. And suggest that, yeah, we, we post it as available and then you, you can, it's always helpful to talk to individuals you think would be good.
With regard to the first step, that's now.
Yes.
So.
So I, I've started.
You've started to collect or.
Given, I've given department heads a short survey and collecting those now. And we can set up a time for, for all of you to talk about what you see as skills and challenges.
We may have time to talk about that at age fifteen.
Yes.
We may. That's correct. All right, we're at seven thirty, so we can shift back over to, let's see, interviews and appointments. So we've got several to deal with here, and we're starting out with the bike and pedestrian committee. And Peter, do we have Peter here?
Right here.
Peter's right here, okay. So, Peter, if you'd like to tell us just a little bit about yourself.
Sure.
Short, short bit so that we can get familiar with your interests and.
Sure. Yeah, so I'm, I'm newer to the town, I've lived here for four years. I rented for two years, bought a place on Norwood a couple of years ago. I have two daughters, one in the middle school, one in the elementary school. So I'm constantly walking around not only the school areas, but the playgrounds and the parks and the trails. I also have a, a dog that I'm walking through out the town all day, pretty much. I work from home and, you know, frequently kind of taking breaks, you know, you know, tending to the kids, the, the pet, obviously, and exploring the beautiful neighborhood. And this committee, bike and pedestrian, sounded really interesting to me because I'm walking through the streets downtown every day, through the trails, Powder Hill and, you know, to, to the parks on a regular basis. You know, and, and kind of just, you know, enjoying the town from the, from a pedestrian and even biking perspective as well. So I'm always out and about. And that, I think, really kind of sparked the interest in this committee for me, the ability to kind of like make the town, the, the trails, you know, more accessible and safer for both, you know, visitors and residents as well. There are other areas of this committee that I've found interesting as well, such as the coastal cleanup. And there was a, um, another program that they were running. But tho- those types of programs between my connections at the school, with the, with the scouts, Girl Scouts, you know, I, I really can get, you know, very involved very quickly and get a lot of volunteers to help with whatever initiatives that we have and get them interested and aware of the programs that we're running. So those are kind of like the, the passion points to it. And, you know, from a learning experience, I would be completely new to this and, and not, it would be a lot of learning for me. And I think it'd be a great experience for me to kind of like, you know, interact more with the community and learn a little bit more about how these things work, so. That's my story.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Questions from the board here, Jeff?
Have you talked to people on the board?
I, I have, I've not met anybody on the board yet.
Do you see any improvements in your walking around that you think?
I, I saw the bike lanes, I think they were on School Street going up. I thought that was, um, those seemed like improvements over the last few years. I've noticed a lot more kind of flashing yellow lights and pedestrian kind of like walkways, especially like around the schools like Lincoln. And I'm just, I'm always walking around those areas, so it might not feel new to me anymore. Yeah, I mean, I, I think that the, there certainly are great improvements there. You know, I think that there are other opportunities as well. There are some sidewalks on, on some of the streets, I think it's on Brook Street kind of leading up, it's very, very bumpy. And I think there, there's some opportunities to kind of like make some of those things safer, but I'm not sure if that's what this committee specifically focuses on. So even for myself, like I would love to learn more about the committee itself and whether it be cleaning, cleaning up the trails, cleaning the beach, the coastal cleanup projects, those types of things are like, you know, some of my passion points.
Okay. Kathy?
Yeah, Jeff asked a lot of the questions that I was going to ask, but I, um, no, it's good.
I don't know if I answered it a hundred percent, so you can re-ask it if you want.
No, but it's, it's, um, so I'm the liaison from this board to Bike and Pet, so I attend all the meetings and stuff like that. I would encourage you, regardless of, you know, what happens here, they're public meetings, just call in and find out more. So I want to thank you very much for, for raising your hand and it's a small town and a lot of the work gets done by volunteers.
Sure.
So, so thank you very much. And I would just encourage you, any of the committees that you have an interest in, they're public meetings and they like to have, they love to have new people call in.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Well, I did see an email go out, it might have been from the board, that was, you know, volunteers needed.
Yeah.
And I went through all of the different committees and this one just kind of stuck out the most.
Yeah, that was great, next one.
Always kind of fun, but.
Thank you for the first step, no, appreciate it.
Uh, Anne?
Can she see me?
Uh, I'm not sure. Is the camera going toward the end of there?
God, he's talking.
Yeah, she can see me.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it. This is a very popular committee, and there are others that are in the same area that have vacancies. And I'm thinking about the Jabaco Woods, which is a great set of trails outside, at the Manchester, Hamilton, Essex border. And then there are openings on the Streams team, which is a great organization that does identifying the, the streams coming into the, into the harbor and, and cleaning them up. So I'm not saying that we're not going to choose you, I'm suggesting that there are other ways that you can meet some of the things that you want to do in, in areas if, you know, if this one doesn't work out.
If desired, yeah. I, I saw that opening as well, there were one or two different committees with that, so I did notice that as well. And it did look interesting.
Anne stole everything.
She did.
Well, I mean, there is some synergy between for some other committees, necessarily by comparing downtown improvement.
Okay.
Because it is, so I guess the question is, are you singularly focused on this committee? Is this the one you want to have beyond, or would you entertain serving clearly in another capacity?
Well, uh, that's, all right, so I, I'm assuming that you guys have a lot of applicants then for this volunteer position, is that?
Yeah, we, we have, we have four votes for two slots, so we have to kind of sort this out.
Oh, got it, got it, okay.
Yeah.
So I think, so I took the action from the last meeting, that once we completed the interviews, I would go back to the Bike and Pet chairs and ask for their feedback. Because a lot of times the way we try and staff the committees is, you're looking for a diversity of skill sets to support the committee's objectives. I do know that sometimes they are specifically looking for parents of school-aged children, you know? So don't, don't take our questions as if we're not picking you, because that's, that's not the process here. I'm trying to just get information so we can go back to the chairs and say, what do you need?
And just to that point, we're going to ask that question of everyone. I mean, we've got three appointed from interviews from different committees, and the question is going to be the same.
So then Kathy, to, to kind of, then like to that, I would say from a skill perspective and that the skill does, my skill is not walking downtown with the, you know, and having the connections and stuff. It's in advertising, I've worked sixteen years in advertising, um, a data analyst, and I can help like ramp up like any kind of digital initiative.
Yeah.
And I've done a lot for like volunteer work for like building websites and doing analysis and marketing. So, you know, there's a committee that like specifically needs like a lot of help.
Yeah, they do have that need from time to time, I just can't remember who's currently, who has that skill set right now on the committee. So that's why we would take this information to the, there's actually co-chairs of Bike and Pet, they, they share.
Yeah, and I think that they're like, they're, they said, like the Bike and Pet were like, they're doing like a video, like they did with like the, the river filtration, uh.
They did, um, they did a video with our, I don't know if it was the police or DPW on the new bicycle rules, you know, allowing four feet.
Yeah, I saw that.
They did that. So they are trying to get a little more digital and I just can't remember the makeup of the, the team right now, but they.
So if there's a committee that, you know, if they're kind of like, from a skill perspective, if they're all set with that, and that's probably how it could like help out immediately, coming in unskilled.
Not sure, that may be one of the vacancies they're trying to fill.
Right.
That's why I had to go back and ask.
Yeah, okay, yeah, just let me know, yeah, that's cool.
Another factor is, is where you fit in demographically, to be honest, a lot of the council committees don't have kids in school. That provide you input on what's going on.
Yeah.
So that's important. And this, this whole situation, filling the committees, has really changed in the past several months because we have kind of mounted an effort to try and get new people into committees. And we also started to look at how many people have served how many terms, and then we need to open it up if there are people that have served an awful lot of terms. And it exceeded our expectations. Let's just say. We've had, we're in a position where we now have to make decisions, whereas before, we're missing one person and we get one person.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That's no longer the case.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's good because we're talking to new people, right?
We're meeting you.
Yeah.
We would not have met you, so thank you again for raising your hand.
So that's, that's important. So do we have all of the information except from the chairs, I guess, the Bike and Pet?
Yeah, I, I, what I was planning to do is take the information from this and the interviews we conducted the last time and send a note to David and Dana and get their thoughts, because we, we really should get the input from the chairs. We, but we haven't completed the interviews yet, so I didn't do it.
Right, that's, that's correct. Okay, well, that's good. So that'll be pending and we should be able to do that by the time of the next meeting and we would make some decisions based upon all the information.
Okay.
Two weeks, is that?
Two weeks.
That's fine.
So that's good.
Thank you.
All right, continue walking.
I might see you, I walk my dog a powerhouse trail on the lines all the time.
And in, and in the interim, I would talk to the chairperson.
Yeah, definitely reach out to them, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would be in touch with them this weekend.
Yeah, it's good, yeah.
And then see what the story is. Okay. The next group is the Community Preservation Committee. And we've got a couple of interviews here, one is, the first, Donna?
Oh, yeah.
Donna Brewster, okay, Donna. Good evening.
Hi.
Talk to us.
So, interesting that Peter mentioned a lot of stuff that I was thinking, because I was looking at, I think it was the Cricket, and it had, you know, all these different committees that they needed people for. And I know that volunteerism is so important in the community, just like you guys are here. I have to be on the Fourth of July committee too, which we need people for that. But, um, I've lived in, I've been living here for, I think, like thirty-six years, and I've seen a lot of the improvements that have been possible through the Community Preservation Act. And I just thought, well, you know, I love Manchester, I like the historic nature, but I also see how it's evolving. And I thought, well, if I could help out, I would. So that's basically it. My background is not in this area. I was a school teacher, I'm retired, and I figured, well, if I could volunteer and help the community, I would. So that's basically it.
Brian, any questions?
No, so you're, so you're retired, and again, the question that eventually is always asked is, and you would have the time to commit to this? Uh, on this particular committee, a lot of decisions are made as far as?
I, I do have time that I would like to give back to my community. So, that's, and then this one did seem interesting to me because I like seeing all the changes that have been made and are constantly being made.
And have you had any discussions with any members of the CPA?
No.
Jack, right, Jack's there.
Jack, Bert.
Jack, Bert.
Yeah, no, I could feel, reach out to him.
I think he's still the chair.
Yeah.
Uh, Anne, questions for?
Donna.
Donna.
I guess, um, the CPC is, is different from many of the other committees in that it takes applications and, and has to weigh them against the um finances available. Um, and more than most of the committees, involves sometimes turning things down. Is that something you'd be comfortable with?
Uh, yeah, so, so I understand that we have a certain amount of money to go toward projects that are proposed. And I would think that the committee's responsibility is to see which, which ones are in the best interest of the town, keeping the nature of the community. So, yes, I would be, I would feel comfortable with that.
Might be an opportunity to use that scientific uh process to uh weigh the pros and cons of different uh applications and, and, cause that, that's basically, you know, what they do, a lot of people are asking for the money.
Yeah.
And there's a, do you have a, um, I guess I was gonna ask you, do you have a philosophy around how the CPC should allocate money? Because some people uh feel that we have a lot of little things that we give money to. And some people feel that's the right approach and others feel, you know, we have this big bucket of money, we should spend it on fewer things that have a greater impact. So, do you have a, a philosophy around how the CPC should um consider those applications?
Uh, no, I don't have a philosophy, but I would imagine I would probably be talking to the other members of the committee and um weighing the pros and cons, what's in the best interest of the town.
Jack?
Um, I don't really have anything, just thank you for taking your time to step up and see your interests.
Well, I just see, there's so much volunteerism and if I could help, I'm happy to do that.
Definitely.
And, and I guess, um, in our, our list of committees that need more help, one that involves changes in town is the Downtown Improvement Group. And I think they're, what Kathy knows a lot more about that than I, but um that's an area where we could use um good analytic ones.
Like, my husband's on that committee, Gordon Brewster, Gordon.
Uh, that's kind of too many.
I don't think he'd want me on the committee. He may wanna do a swap, no.
It's conflict of interest.
Yeah, right, exactly, he'd be saying, that's my territory.
Uh, Donna, you're, uh, you were on the July Fourth Committee, are you still on that or?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, you're still active there, okay?
Nice travel, by the way.
Yeah, it worked out very well.
Yeah, it was good, it was a good parade and, and the fireworks worked out, well Cheryl does a great job.
How long have you been on that committee?
Five years, six years?
Okay, you've been on there for a little while. Anything in particular you've learned from committee management here and your volunteerism on that committee?
It, it takes a team. And we have some really dedicated people on the team. And we make it, we, we set an agenda and um make it work.
That July Fourth, I, I assume that's, it's kind of seasonal, there are several months where nothing is going on in that committee.
Oh, yeah, yes.
And I wouldn't say the CPC is not like that because they tend to have an intense time starting around September, October through, through February or March, but uh the other months, they're not necessarily soliciting.
So it's your winding down from the Fourth, you're getting credit.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Yeah. Goes, goes through a cycle. Well, good, well, I, I, I thank you for raising your hand and saying, I've got a little more time, let's look for another committee. And uh, thank you for, for volunteering for that.
Well, thank you for all you do, cause, cause you guys put a tremendous amount of time in looking, so.
Thank you. Anne, next, Rosemary?
Rosemary Costello, Twelfth Bennett Street. Um, I've lived there since two thousand eighteen with my husband and my son. I am uh the Chair of the Historic District Commission and Historical Commission. We recently revived the Historical Commission. Um, I did attend last month's CPC, CPA, CPC meeting. Um, and you know, uh, Joe is our representative from the committee, so I am not seeking to be the representative from the committee, I'm seeking to get a large seat. Um, I wanna honor Joe's interest and continued interest in the, our representative and also share my interest um in the um activities. Uh, I have a master's degree in historic preservation and prior to being a stay-at-home mom, I worked for a grant program at the state housing community development agency, which is now Housing and Public Development Agency. Um, in a grant program for community development. And um, I am also a volunteer with the Essex County Community Foundation and United Way in Grant Review. So I have some pretty strong um grant experience and um funding. Both municipal um requests as well as federal requests. Like I started at the National Park Service with the Historic Preservation Fund, so. All of this is sort of my personal interest as well as professional interest prior to um raising my son, who is now twenty and in college, so I have lots of time for volunteering. Um, I've been on a lot of local um nonprofit boards, but right now I'm um only doing the Historic District and Historical Commission. We have a new grant that we just got from the state that is about to issue an RFQ and um looking forward to how that um work could result in some potential projects for the CPC. Um, down the road a bit, I did see this next year is going to be the twentieth anniversary of the CPC in Manchester as well as the twenty-fifth anniversary of the CPA. So I think it'd be a great uh chance to have some sort of celebration um in town about what's happened in the past twenty years um as well as what's happened twenty-five years. Uh, also the Community Preservation Plan needs to be updated um in the following fiscal year. So I think um planning and strategic planning is something um with this funding, we could have some opportunities to look at. You've asked a question about preference for small projects or big projects. I think that um personal preference shouldn't be what we go by. I think we should have um a plan that is strategic and looking at what the community needs are. Uh, there are some incredible opportunities to bond the CPC money. Um, and since we're bringing in over four hundred thousand dollars a year, um including the state match, that's money that could be um potentially a big shot for community projects if bonded.
Great, thank you, Rosemary. Anne, you wanna start off, any questions?
Clearly she's been listening to the questions, she's under. Oh, I, yeah, but you've done, you're doing a great deal for the town and, and you've made a very clear case for yourself, thank you. I have, thanks.
Thank you. Jeff?
Well, thank you for your service so far, it's a lot of work and you're obviously very qualified. Do you have any questions?
Kathy?
I have a question. Um, and I uh was on a nonprofit board with Rosemary. Um, she's a great board member, I can attest to that. My question though is, you are already involved in two committees.
Well, we're one.
Well, I'm sorry, one.
Yes, we do two things, but we.
That's right, one committee that does two things.
Yes.
Um, there's already a representative from your committee on the CPC, so I'm a little bit, I guess I'm asking about a potential conflict of interest. Um, do you see that at all and I presume you wanna stay on the Historic District Commission, not give up that seat for the CPC seat?
Um, what do you think the conflict of interest is?
I'm asking, do you, do you see?
No, I think I, um, I think, um, I don't wanna say anything that maligns anyone and so I think I bring different skills than Joe and different interests in um historic preservation than Joe. Um, so I don't see that being a conflict. And also, we have a full commission for um, once in the past few years, we, we had operated under. So I'm hoping that some of our new members are gonna take some more responsibility, I may not be the chair forever. Um, and so, kind of training people up into that.
Do you have a succession plan, I guess?
Uh, I have, over, you mean towards that? Um, so, no, I think um there, there should be no conflict.
I guess my other question would be, um, assuming Joe is looking at CPC and potential projects from the historical um preservation perspective, let's say, what, what different lens are you gonna bring to that?
Oh, probably more in the grant and fiscal responsibility.
Okay.
Kind of angle. Uh, I haven't seen the application, but I know there's always room for that analysis.
That's what I wanted to know, thank you.
Brian?
No, you've done your homework. So I, I assume that this level of preparedness would follow through. And beyond that, I think you did a good job selling yourself.
And for me, I do serve on the Historic District Commission with Rosemary, so I know her fairly well. Certainly historic preservation is a category in CPC, you would have that covered in spades, there's no question about that. A good deal of knowledge in, in that regard. Have you spoken with Jack, Bert?
Yeah, I went to the um meeting last month at the Chatterhouse and um Joan is also the co-chair now.
Uh, yes, oh, is, they're co-chairs?
Yeah, um, I did speak to them.
Okay, alright, so you're familiar, so we have to chat with them and see what, what the, what the situation is um because we've got to kind of figure out how things are going to fit together and I guess there is an incumbent who was in the CPC who was also interested in staying on, so we've got to, we've got to kind of figure out how this is. This is gonna fit together, there's one slot, three people. So, we've got to chase that down. I don't know that we have an interface with the CPC, do we? As, as a select board?
Liaison, no we don't.
Liaison? I will speak with Jack. Alright, get his perspective on things, so that's good. And we, so we've got to figure out how things are gonna fit together here, because we've got Donna and then we, Rosemary and there is also, who's the?
Woody.
Let's tell him, yeah. So, see what the story is. Okay, alright, that's great, thank you very much. Harper?
So, just for clarity, we're gonna talk to our various chairs and make a decision at the next meeting, two weeks.
That's correct.
Two weeks.
That's correct. We need, uh, we need input.
Do you want us to attend in two weeks or?
You don't have to, you don't have to.
Who wants to miss something like this?
You can always attend through Zoom if you wanted to see the discussion, absolutely, yeah. Now it's a public meeting, we'll just be chatting here. Thank you, thank you very much for stepping up, appreciate it.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. Okay, um, Harbor Advisory Committee, Tony?
That's me.
Go.
Alright, so, um, I'm uh moved, I'm like these two, is inspired by the cricket article that I saw. So I'm looking for volunteers, so um, we moved to town three years ago from Acton and we have never been more aligned with the decisions we've made. Um, so we're, we're, we're just thrilled to be here. And uh, I've been an avid voter all my life, we moved to town and I thought I'd sold my last boat, but today I think I bought my fourth one since I'm in.
You're something in the water.
So I have, I have a thirteen-foot whaler that I keep out there um in the inner harbor, Marina, and then I've got a kayak out behind, behind here and it's down on. And uh, so when I saw, and Steve Lobber is my neighbor, uh who's already on the Harbor Advisory Committee. And so I thought, well, I'd be delighted to, to put my hat in the ring for that. Um, I, my, our children are both, well, my daughter and my son are both out of college. Uh, he's twenty-five, she's twenty-three. And oddly enough, since we moved to Manchester, they both decided to move back home. When we were in Acton, they were gone, happy god, but now the summer's here, they all seem to be at our house. Um, but they're, they're moving on again, so. You know, when the winter's.
Season's almost over, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Seasonal guests, yeah.
I was in film and television most of my career and then about, oh, eighteen years ago, nineteen years ago, I got into the world of uh creating and developing, producing, um ethics training for very large companies. And so that's what I do now and I'm not retired yet. So that's, that's my business and uh, I, I also live, actually, uh near the Walvern in Ireland. I have, we have a house in Ireland and I'm there four plus months a year. Um, so, and there, we have a much, much smaller harbor with only about eight recreational boats and one lobster.
You also have an oyster bar, so.
It's a bit different.
They do, they're a bit different.
Steamed.
Um, I, I also have a friend with an oyster bed there, with an oyster bar in his house, so I am, and I've been born a little bit.
Thank you very much, Jack, questions? Kathy?
Um, so have you attended any of the?
I have not, I have talked to Steve and I've read through the minutes for the last two years.
Is there any particular aspect of, you know, managing the harbor or making decisions about the harbor that really wanted to contribute towards? What, what's the itch you're trying to scratch?
Well, it's just, look, I, I, I mean, it, it's such an outrageous privilege to live in a community with such an astounding resource. So, the preservation, protection of that resource, I mean, it's just vital, so.
Thank you.
No, so it's, it's really a big picture scheme that I'm interested in.
Yep.
Jeff?
Well, I know Tony a little bit, so uh, you know, he has a good head on his shoulders and I know he loves the water and boats and he loves our harbor here, so um, I think any committee would be lucky to have him.
Thank you. Uh, it's, um, it's, you know, it's not only the harbor, I mean, when we moved here, I mean, calling this community was very, very different from what it was. It's, like I said, there's a lot of, never been about a decision committee.
On the water.
I'm glad, like, near enough.
Anne? Who's on the water?
Yes.
As we speak.
Yeah, at the moment, um, I guess, uh, what we're facing at the moment is, is the desire for more regulations. Um, you may have heard earlier in the night that, that when in Greg's, uh, ministerial news report that um there are concerns about the safety of, of, um, San Dollar Cove, particularly when there are large celebrations there. Um, there are also, as, as if the re-park flunks are extended, we probably want to try and avoid having them turn into, you know, fra- we'd probably want to try and avoid having them turn into frat parties. Is that a part of what you would be interested in, particularly with your ethics background?
Well, yeah, absolutely. I mean, those are two extraordinary resources. And I love them, but the utmost respect for Brian, because I think we've been very lucky to have him as a harbor master. And now, you know, I've heard great things about him, that he's had. Yeah, absolutely, I think that's something that, you know, I never saw Sand Dollar Cove until the trip. We didn't really go out there last year. I suppose we went during the week when it was very quiet. But yeah, I mean, I think that's what I mentioned when I was talking about the reservation and protection. This is incredible reasons. I don't know how to address, I can't imagine, you know, the idea of there being a party down on the docks. That, that's, you know, wouldn't be helpful for anyone who lives nearby or in the harbor or community at all.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ryan?
I know Tony. I questioned your mass call of liberalized, why do you call it not that?
I know, well, you've already had that, Scott.
No, I agree. You know, I know his love for the harbor and the water and the respect that he has.
Thanks.
So no, I think well-qualified, he did a great job. The only question I do have, so the four months out of the year you're gone, you'll be available by?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. And I know Steve does that as well. But it's on and off, so I probably, yeah, I mean, most of the meetings by far physically there.
That's good. So you've been around, I assume you don't have a mooring at this point?
No, I don't, although I'm very low on the shallow mooring, which precipitated the purchase of a 19-foot sailboat today.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Well, I'm very, very low on that shallow mooring.
Okay, all right, well, that's understandable. No, well, I thank you for raising your hand and all of the interest that you've got in that. And have you spoken with, was it Carl, I guess, he's the chair?
I know Carl, not well, and I will re-challenge him, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think it's important to do that.
Yeah.
We've got to kind of decide, we've got three folks for two slots here.
Okay, yeah.
You know, great to have these challenges.
Yeah, I know, this is a wonderful thing.
But we've got to kind of figure out and get the appropriate inputs so that we can make some decisions in two weeks or so.
I can reach out.
You're the harbor guy, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the harbor guy, awesome.
Your assignments. Okay, well, that's good, Tony, thanks very much. And we'll see what happens in two weeks.
And thank you all, because this is small potatoes compared to what you are.
No, committees are really very, very critical for everything that's going on in the aggregate. I mean, it's just one committee, but there are three-something committees, and they really are important.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, great. All right, so we're going to have decisions. I'm bringing back information from CPC. Who is, let's see, Kathy was dealing from Bike and Pen.
Bike and Pen.
And.
You're doing CPC.
Jeff, and Jeff, you'll let me touch on.
And I have no responsibility to this whatsoever.
So we'll, we'll look forward to receiving comments and thoughts.
Excuse me, Brad.
Probably one of the greatest lines in movies.
Yes.
What?
Is from A Few Good Men. I have no responsibility here whatsoever.
All right, good. All right. Is there any motion that has to be made here?
I don't think so.
We skipped all of that.
Oh, good.
All that.
Jeff, done.
We could have stayed on one page.
I know, I didn't know what you were going to do.
Well, yeah, we just.
Got to be prepared.
This is a different process because of what's happened, which I think is good.
Yeah, previously, we were always on this phone, it's moving. Okay, thanks for raising your hand, your eyes.
No, you're getting a lot, meeting a lot of new people, it's great. That's fantastic.
This is great. All right, so next on the list is the discussion about Cape Van Transit. And let's see, who wants to kind of kick this off? Greg, do you want to put a little background in on this, or?
Sure, happy to, or you can put in as well, because you've had numerous conversations with.
I've had conversations.
So currently, we offer seniors in town a van transportation through an in-house operation of the Council on Aging. We have the free vehicles, we have a couple of extras right now, just because we're in transition. We have the two, the two bigger van, two mini buses, and then the one, one van. We typically have one on the road three, five days a week, and then the second one, three days a week, occasionally the third one, or depending on the demand, whether or not they're using the minibus or the van. And that's, as I said in my notes, that's basically, you know, 8:30 to 3:30 timeframe for the five days a week, and then Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, the second one, and before. I would say it's meeting the majority of the demand. There are new occasions where someone is requesting a ride, and they're not able to provide it during those times. There are requests beyond those times. And I think that's, that's part of the challenge we have, is to, is to provide that rider, those rides beyond those normal hours of operation. So later in the day or into the evening, where we don't provide any rides in the evening. So in the past, we've had conversations with CADA about, at one point, we were talking about a fixed group service to provide a loop in town to help people get to the commuter rail. That has changed significantly with, with the post-pandemic in terms of people working from home or otherwise. The ridership on the rail line is significantly diminished. You don't have nearly the demand at the parking lot that we used to. So we've dropped, we haven't really pursued the fixed group possibility. But CADA can certainly provide additional on-demand service. And Felicity's here, she can talk about the two different, the dial-a-ride and the non-demand.
Yeah.
Right, as well. So I think that's why we're here tonight, to see if it makes sense to either do some supplemental rides through, through CADA, or think even beyond. So I think it'd be helpful to hear from Felicity. Appreciate your coming, and sorry to keep you waiting, but we're almost on time. For us, we're almost on time. So, if that makes sense.
Yes, I think it does. And yeah, we're interested in these, I guess, on-demand, one of you actually call it on-demand, but the point-to-point kind of service, not the bus type of service, but the.
Right.
The things that seniors are really looking for, to go to certain places at specific times. And we can't quite meet all of the requirements and the demands that the seniors here would like, which is why we're exploring this. So you have a relationship like this with some other towns, I guess, or?
We do, CADA provides van service for seniors in Gloucester, Rockport, and also Inswich, Essex, and Hamilton. Inswich is more of a minimal, local ride only. They were the first community to expand their services with us. Hamilton and Essex are essentially wherever the senior wants to go. So if they want to go shopping, if they want to go to a friend's house, they call, they book the appointment, and that is where we take them.
Which program is that?
The dial-a-ride.
That's the dial-a-ride.
Yes, the dial-a-ride. The service, the hours that we currently provide our service are similar to the Council on Aging. Right now, our first pickups are generally, generally around eight, and then the last pickup in town to go back home is about three quick timing. So the hours are similar to what's already being provided.
And how does that compare with the on-demand, CADA on-demand?
The CADA on-demand is an app-based software solution where it's kind of like Uber and Lyft. We provide that service in downtown Gloucester and over into East Gloucester and then industrial parks and then we'll go. And that is from 6:30 in the morning until 8 o'clock at night. And people use the app to book their ride when they are ready to go. We only pick up and drop off in that service area.
Okay, so this is Gloucester, this is a Gloucester service at this point?
Right now, it's a Gloucester service.
Okay.
It's extremely popular, and then, which is great, but it's also more expensive.
Yeah, if you pay for a trip, a couple of dollars or something, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So that's really not on the table here, what we're really talking about is about.
No, I think.
The dial-a-ride.
The better solution, I think, for Manchester would be the dial-a-ride at this point. The, the service would not replace the Council on Aging, the service would serve to supplement what is already existing. Nancy's done a fantastic job. Manchester is known for their van service. So it would, it would supplement what is currently not being done.
All right, that's, when you say, when you say the CADA on-demand, in other words, that could expand beyond Gloucester, or?
It could expand, we have funding, we have grant funding for 12 to 18 months to pilot it up in Rockport. The problem with the grant funding is, once it runs out, you have to stop the service, or you have to find another one to pay for it.
So right now, I mean, this is something, if we explore, we'd start a little and see how that works, and then kind of expand. So that's, I think, a little bit beyond what we worry about right now.
Yeah.
I have a question for us. So if I remember, the feedback from our citizens, they would like more, like, later hours than what we currently serve, right? So if we went with CADA for the dial-a-ride, could we then reschedule, like, one of our vans to be more of a second shift van as opposed to a first shift, right?
Something to explore.
Because I don't see the value in going with CADA unless it's going to give us a capability we don't have, because we're pretty much meeting the need. Nancy's doing a great job. But if we can leverage that so that we can repurpose one of our vans to address the need we're not meeting, that is very interesting to me.
That would be good. And I wouldn't say we're necessarily meeting the needs of the seniors right now. We have the vans, but they also have set schedules.
Okay.
For various things, market basket trips, et cetera.
Right.
And what I do hear is, people want to do certain things at certain times, not the van schedule for this.
Right.
You can't have van scheduled for that. And there are several of those types of things that go on. So that is a, that ties things down a little bit.
Right, but still, if we have.
The hours would be.
If we had another way of meeting the daytime need, right? And then we do a second shift, you know, just a little bit later in the evening. And that is, so they want to whoop it up at midnight, they got at the cut, they got to go call an Uber or something, okay?
Right.
But we can just get them a little second shift, you know, dinner, so they can have dinner someplace, you know? That I think we're right looking into.
How are we doing with drivers? Are we struggling for drivers, or?
We're okay for now. You know, it hasn't done flowed, certainly.
Yeah, because I know a lot of people are having trouble filling up driving slots.
So it's, it's, it can be a struggle to get drivers.
Right now, at the moment.
Right now, we're in good shape, but it can, can change quickly.
So to that point, one van operates five days a week, the other one operates three days a week. Because why don't they both operate five days?
It's a combination of fun.
I mean, that's money.
Right, right, it's a budgetary issue.
Okay, all right, so it's the budget, it's budget issue.
You know, the van drivers are an interesting full-time work.
All right, so van, in other words, where we're at right now, van drivers are a challenge. In other words, if you get the van drivers, now you just got to worry about the money. You apparently have to worry about the van drivers getting them and the money to pay for them. Both of those are issues. Okay. And this, this particular program, and I saw some of the numbers associated with this, a little bit, filling in the blanks. And if I believe that, what I see here, we pay the MBTA, what, $120,000 a year?
We'll hire, yeah, 130. Yeah, 133.
133.
What do we do for that?
You're going to train some, which a lot of people want to get rid of now.
Yes.
A lot of people don't.
Okay. And so the numbers you've got here, for it not to cost us anything, we really can't do more than nine hours, three days. Is that correct?
Yeah.
I'm looking at the math, because anything above that, now you're earning the 140, 150. We've got $133,000 that can go in any direction.
Right, if you don't want to.
But to keep this at zero, you know, no incremental cost, that's what, that's what the number would be, so.
So yeah, following that line of thinking, though, right now, we have one van that's three days a week, that is, what, eight hours? 10 to 4, did you say 10 to 4?
10 to 4.
Okay, that'd be six hours, excuse me. So you could get three extra hours, three days a week, and repurpose a van to cover a second shift, if I figure that I'm right. So nine hours, yeah. I mean, it's, if we went with the $109,000 amount here, we'd get three extra hours each of the three days, correct?
Yeah, that's total of nine hours, three days, is that correct? That's not nine hours.
No, no, 27 hours a week, it says 27 hours a week.
27, that is.
So right now, we're only doing, that second van is only doing six hours each of the three days. This is three extra hours on the three days, right?
Or two to, or two different days.
I'm, I'm asking, there's 109 in the document here.
So it's 27 hours a week.
Right.
So you would have 27 hours more, if you did.
What I'm suggesting is taking the van today that is doing the three trips, take that off the table. Okay, replace it with this, and that, that van, repurpose it for like a second shift or more point-to-point, you know, repurpose it, I'm not saying get rid of it.
Right.
I'm just saying, use it differently than it's being used today. You know, is that an option? Would the driver be amenable to that? That's the question. I mean, some people, depending on their situation, might enjoy working, you know, later hours, some not, I mean, that's, depends.
We'd have to explain, it's maybe not necessarily the same driver.
Right.
You know, it could be somebody else that said, I don't want to work, but, you know, there are other times, these other people could work, and that's why they're not with us.
Exactly, like if someone's driving a school bus.
Right.
In the morning, and they're done by whatever time, but done by 4 o'clock, maybe they'd be interested in, you know, lots of, lots of options.
Options.
But I think your suggestion is good to try and fill that in with our van, and then use this for the regular stuff.
The regular stuff, yeah, that's a relevant thing.
So we want to explore that, see how that would fit together. And CADA gives us 27 hours.
Yeah.
Right.
Sorry, Greg, what, the third van that we have, what does that one do?
So it's just depending on the ridership. So if you only have a few people, you're not, you're using the smaller van, not the big.
So we have two drivers that operate three vans?
Well, we have, we have more than two drivers.
Okay.
At any one time, we have two drivers.
At any one time, we have two drivers, okay. So the, we have three vehicles, and we, we right-size it for the need, okay.
Okay, just three, not four, just three. There were a couple you said you were getting rid of because.
Right, I mean, right now, we have.
We're not counting.
We have five, yeah.
That's temporary.
Okay. Well, there are a lot of towns that are jealous of us, we've got three vehicles. There are a lot that don't have any. That's, that's for sure. Okay, so. I can't see what's going on, so I think we have to kind of figure out if that will fit with us, with the schedule that we can fill in in the afternoons, maybe five days a week, or as many as we can get out.
So it might. So it might be good to get some feedback from, from the Council on Aging. Like what, were there specific days where the seniors who aren't quite getting their needs met, were they looking for like a Thursday through Sunday type thing, after-hours on the weekends? Or are they wanna avoid the weekends, they wanna do, you know, maybe go to restaurants Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, when there's no crowd? So I think it might be helpful too to get some of that information that they probably aren't.
Yeah.
So from a scheduling, if I could ask, from a scheduling perspective on your end, does, is it best to have the twenty-seven hours in, in three days, or can they be spread out over more than three days?
I was actually thinking about this like while I was driving to Manchester. It's easiest for CADA if they are nine hours at a time.
So, yeah.
But if it works better for Manchester to approach it differently, that's something that we can talk about. We can figure that piece out. Yeah.
Kind of like six hours.
But all things being equal, it certainly is easier for you to do three, four hours.
It would be, yeah, it would be. But what's easier for us may not actually meet what the town needs.
Okay, take credit.
And, and, and how, how do you, you handle that? In other words, you put something together, say, say it's six hours a day, and that, that's maybe where we're kinda going, like, you know, one P M. to seven P M. Five days or something like that. Do you dedicate a vehicle for that, or is that a vehicle? Because I, we don't know what the demand is here, it's right away, it's probably, they're not doing a whole lot for certain times today. Or do we split time with Essex, or, because you're doing this for Essex?
Yeah.
And how, how is that gonna fit together?
Depending, the demand that we have between Essex, Manchester, Hamilton, that dictates how many vehicles we send out. Because our goal is to pick and bring one up, obviously on time, you know, a important amount of time, we don't want them waiting. So if Manchester has a whole bunch of people going out one day, it could be one van that just does Manchester customers. In reality, it would probably be a van picks up Manchester people and drops them off. It may be a different driver in the afternoon that, you know, did Essex people and Hamilton people in the morning, that brings those Manchester people back. So the vans move between the communities depending on where people are being picked up and where they're actually going.
This is one day in advance?
Two days.
Two days in advance?
Two days.
And so you, you know what's going on each day, you could say, ah, are we doing this together, sort of jigsaw puzzle?
Yeah, and it is, looking at the schedule and then trying to fill out the trips.
Okay. Understand how that, that, that fits. And these are vans that hold?
They hold between fourteen and sixteen people.
They're significant vans. Alright, so I understand. How did this, when you've opened this up to other communities, how has this grown? And I don't know how long you've been in Essex or Hamilton, but those are analogous maybe to us a little bit, but.
Essex and Hamilton took right off because we were replacing a previous provider. So those customers just kind of transitioned over to us. When we started Ipswich, that was a brand-new service. It took about, it actually took about twelve months for people to really begin using the service. And once they began, the ridership just took off. It, it has not slowed down, it's kept at a consistent level. Last year, we did about nine hundred and fifty trips in Essex, and then Hamilton and Ipswich were around twelve hundred.
Do you do any kind of promotion for all of this when you go into a town, or is this all on our shoulders? You do?
No, it's, not just you guys' problem. We'll help.
Good.
Yeah, we work with the Council on Aging in the town to, you know, obviously design the service. We have a flyer, which I do not send out, that describes a service, describes, you know, CADA service rules, you know, if there's a fair, you know, what the fair is, it's normally two dollars one-way, anything else that they need to be aware of. And then that is the information that we distribute through the council, through the town. Any other local media, we can put it out through that, just so that we attempt to get it out through to everybody before the service actually starts.
Right. Yeah, and the service, well, I mean, when you said two dollars, that's a, that's the, that's the app service, right? Or is this service?
We encourage a fair for the van service.
For the van, and how much is that, two dollars?
Two dollars.
One-way or whatever?
Yes, two dollars one-way.
Okay. That's good. Any questions, Pat? Do you have any?
I do. Not questions, but I've got a comment.
Okay.
So if other people have questions.
Any more questions from the board here? Okay, Pat, name, address, please.
Okay, my name is Pat Lennon, I live on Lincoln Street, and I'm here at the age of three, and I'm, I'm also a retired nurse. So I'm also a member of the Friends of the Council on Aging. So I want you, members of the board, to all of a sudden pretend you've just left the doctor's office, where you've been told you can no longer drive. You've got an underlying medical problem that your physician's been treating you for years. Your diabetes neuropathy's gotten worse, and you're not safe to use the brake and the gas pedal. Your macular degeneration has declined. I could, Parkinson's is worse. I could go on and on and on. So you get home, you hang up your keys, and you have a seat, and it suddenly hits you, how am I gonna do my day-to-day activities, weekly and monthly? How am I gonna maintain my independence? My relatives, I have two distant cousins that live far away. My classmates, I grew up with, there's one left in the town, and they only will drive in the town. How am I gonna get to the hairdresser, get to the barber, get to the manicurist, get to the train station so I can get to Salem and meet weekly, with my weekly buddies from Salem State for lunch? How am I gonna see my brother in Ipswich in the nursing home three times a week? How am I gonna get to the YMCA in Beverly to use the punching bags? Because I have Parkinson's and it helps maintain the doors. And it suddenly really hits me hard, how am I gonna maintain independence? Also, how am I gonna get to the movies when I want? How am I gonna go shopping when I want? I, I just don't wanna go with the group, I wanna do some independence. So a few weeks ago, I had to have my car serviced for the day, I knew that. And so I found myself having to sit and repark all day, waiting, because I knew it was gonna take all day. Because we didn't, at that time, we did not have CADA. If we had CADA, I would've used them to go to my house and back down. I had a foot issue that I was getting PT for, so I knew I could not walk home. Seniors notoriously do not wanna bother other people and ask for help. They cannot afford taxis to come from Gloucester or Beverly. Last time I looked into it, it's eighteen dollars each way plus a tip. They cannot afford Uber and all these extra mobile services that the Jet Set uses. I also was a visiting nurse, and I covered K-Ban. When I get to Manchester, I'd go to the houses, I'd go to the apartments, and these seniors who I knew would say, Patsy, they'd all call me my little girl's name because they knew who I was, don't ever retire in this town. And I'm, I'm like, what, are they crazy? It's a beautiful town with this ocean and all these beautiful beaches. They said, you're a prisoner in your home or the apartment, you cannot get out once you no longer drive. We were brought up on these beaches, we learned to swim, we learned to sail. Do you think we can even go to Tuck Point for a couple of hours in the dead of the heat of the summer? No. There's no way to get there unless we get a cab from Gloucester or Beverly. And then it really hit me. And so I asked a senior this morning, who was at coffee and conversation, what one item would you miss if all of a sudden you couldn't drive? She said, I couldn't name one item. My life would be over in this town. Because I am so active, I need to keep up with my groups outside this town and keep active and not be isolated. So in summary, I do hope you will support the seniors in this town with providing a CADA transportation so that they could maintain some independence and avoid isolation, which is the worst thing a senior can do. Seniors are not the same as seniors twenty-five years ago, where at the age of eighty, they look forward to go, going to, quote, the home. I go to the Y in Beverly, and you should see ninety-year-old seniors on the Stairmaster. I mean, it just, you know, really puts me into awe. So seniors are much more active, they wanna maintain independence, and that's why I am here to support CADA. Thank you for your time and listening.
So I, I have, I got a quick follow-up question here. Is this to assume that the van service that we have here is not available to cover at least some of those activities?
I cannot speak for the van.
Don't you call the van?
I don't call the van.
Or does somebody call the van, you know, I mean?
I don't, I don't use the van.
Okay, how come?
Because I still drive.
She's driving.
Oh, because you drive, I'm sorry, because you drive. These other folks.
As long as I can. And I will say, the golden years comes much faster than you would think. So enjoy your independence and your health while you have it.
Well, I, I mean, so for all of these situations that you described, I, I'm just wondering, our van service should be able to help some of these people some of the time.
They don't go to Salem, they don't go to Ipswich.
Well, I don't think CADA's going to Salem, is it?
They provide, as far as I know.
You go to Salem?
No.
As far as I know, I've never heard anything other than medical appointments. I've not seen anything listed in the monthly editorial that they mail out on what, what extra services they would do, or what extra towns they would do. And I've not seen it in the Manchester Cricket. Alls I know is they do provide medical appointments.
That's a good question that you're bringing up. I guess my incorrect assumption was that the seniors could request to go anywhere. What are we, is it just medical, is that what we offer, in addition to the group trips that are planned?
Right, so there's the shopping trips, there's.
Those are planned.
Events that are planned, yeah.
Yeah, but for personal, individual interest for day-to-day activities that you do, you know, or on a weekly basis.
Right, so they're prioritizing, they're prioritizing doctors, doctors.
You know, seniors need.
Right.
Okay, and when you prioritize that, there's nothing left.
Nothing, but there's, there's less.
Because I mean, if you wanna go see a friend, you know, whatever you wanna use the ride for.
Exactly. And I'll tell you, many seniors end up in the hospital or rehab for new knees, new hips, or whatever. And seniors would like to go visit them.
Sure.
You know, there's many reasons. And that's why I'm here to support CADA.
Do we, Greg, restrict the towns that our vans go to?
They've gone here and far, they've gone into Boston.
That's what I was gonna ask, okay. So for medical appointments, they'll go pretty much to Boston or?
They'll have a shopping trip to Brown and Hamilton or something like that. But it's, but it's a scheduled trip, as opposed to saying, I woke up, it's a beautiful day, I wanna go visit Amy.
Right.
Right, that's what Amy is.
What is, what is the scope of CADA regarding these, the Dial-A-Ride? What towns?
We're gonna Salem, Gloucester, Rockport, Ipswich, Essex. Danvers.
Rowley, Peabody.
Rowley.
Lennon.
And we do do Peabody, okay.
Did you go to Peabody?
Yeah.
Why?
And you do go to Salem? Okay, because that wasn't on my, oh, yes, the tunnel.
Basically the North Shore.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, that's, that's gotta cover eighty percent.
Yeah, that's, that was good.
Uh, good stuff. Outside of that, now you're talking medical to Burlington or something like that.
So even if there was a small charge, the, the value or the opportunity is much greater than what we can currently.
There's a lot more flexibility. There, I mean, there is flexibility. There doesn't seem to be much flexibility with us at this point.
Yeah.
So is there a charge distance-wise, or is it a flat fee?
It's a flat fee. It was two dollars in town, two fifty out of town, but we reduced it to a flat amount a couple of years.
That's reasonable, reasonable.
And so when folks, and I, you know, I don't know how you put all of this jigsaw puzzle together. Sometimes you can't accommodate people, or pretty much you all, regardless, so long as they go within your service area, you're managed to do it.
We pretty much accommodate all of them. We may call, like, if we know someone's going to the grocery store, and they're, you know, they wanna go at ten o'clock in the morning when we're dropping all the medical appointments off, you know, we may call them and say, can we pick you up a little earlier, pick you up a little later? That's kind of flexibility. But we typically accommodate all the customers that have trips.
I just wanna, I understand. So basically, it's on a two-day notice. Alright, so you can't wake up in the morning and say, it's a beautiful day, let's go.
You gotta look at your weather app two days in advance.
Whereas here, for the Council on Aging, they can maybe call the same day, and if something's available, something's available?
Yeah, well, I mean, she charges you triple, you give her twenty-four hour notice.
Yes, understood. Other questions? Our board members? Anne?
I'm, I'm having real trouble imagining why a fourteen to seventeen-person van is the right way to handle, you know, I wanna go to Salem on Thursday so I can have lunch with my lady friends.
The vans, the vans are larger than they need to be. We're actually in the process of downsizing the vehicles. We have some coming in this fall that are gonna be low for a fourteen-passenger. The next set is gonna be a fourteen-passenger, we have four of those coming. So the sixteen passengers are being phased out because they, they are too big. I have, you know, a full bus once a year on those, and that's about it.
So typically, your load is half or less? Yeah.
It's really hard to turn down something that's essentially for us.
We're paying for it anyway, but just the, the money's coming out of one pocket, going to the boss.
Yeah. But I think it would be really nice, in real, by the way, to deal with people who want to go out to dinner or, you know, have a doctor's appointment at four o'clock in the afternoon. And, and maybe our local van can be reworked that way, but I think it's just I, I, I've got this, this thing where I've got free on one side and, and duplicate on the other side, and it's not making any sense to me. And I'm not making any sense either. Thanks.
But I think that what the free does for us is it gives us freedom to reimagine.
Reschedule.
Right, reschedule, do a second shift, yeah.
With our van, we have, now we have vans, and we can, we have drivers, we have vans. We now have, uh, uh, we can use a little more creatively that, as opposed to.
It opens up some new possibilities.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
I think it's, I think it's certainly worth exploring.
So maybe come back to us, Greg, with a.
So, see, see what they've got for people.
Can you sit down with Nancy and probably follow up with a few questions, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Sketch out a couple of, couple of free scenarios.
Yeah, yeah. Well, those other towns, I don't know that they have vans. The Ipswich or Hamilton, or, I know Essex does not.
Hamilton and Essex do not. Ipswich has a van that they use for in-town.
For in-town only, okay. But maybe that operates twelve hours a day, you may not know.
I do not know how much that can actually operate.
But I wonder if that's, if this service gave them that flexibility as well.
The Ipswich van service was to take some of the pressure off their volunteer drivers. Because they had volunteers that did all the out-of-town medical. So when we did that out-of-town medical, it allowed them to use their volunteers to do the things that we can do.
But that was strictly in-town. Ipswich. But that was strictly in-town, Ipswich.
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah, very much. Thank you.
Good, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Let's see. Where are we?
I think town meeting.
Town meeting.
So, just a little update on that. So, the eighteenth, turns out it can work. So, one of the concerns was our AV person, but they're willing to commit, Bob Principal is willing to commit to Manchester, and then he'll make sure that he has someone else taking care of Essex so that, so there's not that conflict anymore that we were concerned about. So, I think Alan's preference would be for the eighteenth.
No, no, Monday, November eighteenth.
Monday, November eighteenth, yes.
Okay, that's great. What are we supposed to do?
I move that we set the-
He's also looked at revisited using the high school only, so using the gymnasium again. Bob from, who's doing the AV, feels that he can add some additional speakers to correct some of the acoustical challenges from the gym. He thinks that's very solvable.
Okay, good.
And so, the gym would be the primary spot, and then in the overflow, if, if it was needed. I'm not convinced that we're going to need it, but if it was needed, we would flow into the auditorium as the, as the second.
So, so at this point, it's the high school?
Yes, that makes sense. Yes.
I, I'm uncomfortable splitting up between two groups.
Nah.
So, yeah, as somebody who has run multi-location meetings, in order to do that, you would have to assign people to locations by your street or something in advance. Just what, it's not good.
It's a nightmare waiting to happen.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the board schedules a special time meeting on Monday, November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? All right. Ready to vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're set for the town meeting on the eighteenth. Can that into my calendar? Okay. And now, Town Administrator Quarterly Review. All right, it's been an eventful quarter, sir.
I think they all are. I think they all are. So, yeah, highlights, obviously, we have the annual town meeting and closing out the fiscal year. The audit is underway. We should be focused on trying to fit the Mason Building under, under contract. I'd hope to have the PNS delivered today. Need to crack the whip a little harder on our council there. We should have that in the next day or two, and maybe some, you know, additional fine-tuning with the Masons should proceed. We are scheduled to go before the ZBA for the special permit that's needed for the expansion. And the Masons are anxious to have that approval prior to closing. So, we'll hopefully get that approval at the end of the month, and that would set us up for a closing perhaps in September. So, that's, that's honestly a big project that will continue to take up time, but it's a good one. Looking forward to keeping that, that moving. We will move forward, just to finish up on that, we will move forward with getting a fundraising campaign organized. Be looking to hire a fundraiser, professional fundraiser to help with that effort and get that also underway in the fall. And we will be hiring an architect to finalize the expansion plans and get that ready to go off to bed as soon as we've secured the, the needed funds through the fundraising. We did receive some support from the state, and Representative Van Margaret Ferrante was able to secure fifty thousand for us to help with advance the design work and jumpstart the fundraising. So, that's, that was a good piece of news that was confirmed with, with the governor signing, signing the budget. So, that's, that's good progress there, too. So, certainly, going forward, that'll continue to be a major project. Getting underway with, with the recruiting process as we just discussed a little earlier this evening. That'll also be a project going forward. And then, some staffing needs that are coming up. We do need to find a new town clerk, and so we'll be working on that. Diane will be with us for a couple more weeks. Got that advertised, and we'll be working hard to find either an interim if we need to, or if we were lucky enough to hire someone quickly. But most likely, we will need an interim there.
All right. Any questions, comments? Brian?
No.
You got to work. Town man.
I'm sorry, what? No, I'm good.
Questions or comments for, on Greg?
I'd like to compliment him on his efforts in, in dealing with some controversies that have come up in town. Just, just keeping a lid on things and, and getting information to people, and it's, it's really very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. I did, I should have mentioned, we also are in the process of securing a consultant for the operational audits.
Yep. Will we, if we go have somebody?
I'm hoping in the next couple of weeks. Yeah, I should get proposals by the end of this week, and then we can make a selection. At your, I'm hoping that you'll finalize that at your next meeting.
That's soon, huh?
Yeah. Yeah, I'd love to get them underway, just because it would help. The sooner the better, particularly if we can get it started to get into the Sears budget process. The sooner the better. And that was part of that budget process, the whole capital, long-range capital, the facility financing plan. I've got a very preliminary draft, but it needs to, I need Andrew to sit down. We'll sit down together and make sure I'm not making some crazy assumptions, so.
Jeff? Any thoughts?
Eh, well, I haven't been here for a whole quarter, so that wouldn't be fair for me.
That's true.
I mean, I don't have anything bad to say. I appreciate everything you're doing, and thank you for welcoming, welcoming me aboard, and anything I've asked you had answered or have been willing to. So, I think we're-
Check it down.
Pretty good, thank you.
All right, good, well, thank you.
Kathy?
Yeah, and, you know, when we talk about your transition, you always talk about, you know, us identifying the skills that perhaps you don't do as well. I'm focused on the skills that you have that I don't want to lose. So, I just to make that really clear.
Hold on, to that point, I think that-
You know, I'm not done yet.
I'm sorry.
No, so I, I truly value your communication skills. We have had some very challenging conversations this past quarter. You listen very well, and you help us cut to the chase. And whoever takes your place, I hope they have that skill set. To me, that's the number-one skill set because, you know, this board changes, and we need someone with that continuity. The other thing that I think is very important that you bring to the table is we're not municipal bylaw experts, okay? You help us stay focused. You help our governance model work. You help us stay focused on what is our responsibility versus the responsibility of other boards. You do that very, very well, and you do that for other boards. Because when I'm in the planning board meetings, et cetera, you know, you do that for them too and for other boards. And I think that's very, very important because we could go off the rails really easy without, easily without your input. Still, I'm going to advocate, I'm going to be the nag, delegation, delegation, delegation. Those things that you do really well, those things that you do really well, would love to see your staff do them. Because if any of them are interested in your role, they have to demonstrate that they can do that. And, and we see you do it. We, we don't, we don't see your staff in that capacity, you know? And those are two very critical things that you do for us. And I, I also want to give kudos on the, the whole Mascanomo design thing. I thought that was a nice way of approaching, you know, a difficult topic, helping folks visualize what could happen in the future.
I think it's a pretty good model.
It's a really good model.
Like the sort of that co-production with citizens.
Exactly.
We didn't get a ton of participants, but we got enough.
You got enough. In hindsight, I think maybe scheduling, letting people know a little bit further in advance that it's coming. Because I know I would have loved to attend, but I already had my calendar booked by that time. I knew about it. So, but it's a really good model, and we're only going to need more of that, so.
So, we're hoping to replicate that model with Ocean Street. That's the proposal.
Yes, that's right, that's right.
Same, same firm.
Yep.
So, we are hoping if that grant comes through, we can do a similar process.
That's awesome. Thank you again for everything.
I do want to say that your resignation hasn't been submitted properly, right? And you can change your mind, right?
We haven't accepted it.
You can change your mind.
Yeah, that's a whole separate issue. That's correct. Greg, yeah, I want to thank you again for another quarter for all, all that you've done. And, you know, to Kathy's point, I'm not even worried about what you don't do well. You're right. If you can just keep what you've got, it will be a successful, I, I mean, if we can keep those skill set, or most of that skill set, in a new person, we will be, we will be in good shape. Because I think the most important things that you do are the most important things for a person in your position anyway. Starting with, of course, communication and, and hiring the right people and having the right people in the right slots here because it makes your job go a bit easier. You have people that you don't have to say, "All right, you know, today."
It's critical.
So, that's very important. Last, at our last meeting, you outlined all of the goals and priorities that we had discussed at our retreat. And I appreciated that because it was kind of a, I won't say we meandered, but I mean, we kind of moved around, and I thank you for kind of putting that in print and saying, "Here are the seven or eight priorities that we've got." And in that note, you said, "Well, all of us should kind of pick one or two that we should really use, be a champion for that priority, and, well, maybe hold your feet to the fire, or just make sure that that priority is not lost in the coming months."
And, and to help advance it.
Yes, and have to help push that along. So, to that end, I want to have that on our list next week. I don't know if you folks remember his memo from last month.
No, I would like to refresh our memory of that, maybe discuss it at the next meeting.
Sure.
Okay, if you could put a note on it. I'm, I'm looking at it here, well, not here, I guess, yeah, through, A through H. If you could just send that to all of us and say, "Okay."
Yeah, because if we don't take a snapshot, you know, the email goes away in thirty days, and then we lose it, so.
And I think we got to look at-
I also have, put it in a spreadsheet with a few more notes on it.
Okay, okay, that would be great.
I'll send you that.
That would be good. And we should look at that and next, at our next meeting be prepared to say, "I will take this one of that one and see how it kind of gets divided up." So, I think that's, that's important. But on balance, yes, you did a great job, and I look forward to this coming quarter. Well, we're in it.
We're in it.
Smack, grab and move it.
So, good. Anything else with regard to, do you want to say with regard to Greg?
Yeah.
No, I, I-
Don't leave.
What did she say?
Don't leave. So, you know what? When someone retired, a colleague of mine many years ago, he had the best line. He goes, "I have enough, and I've had enough." That was his sign-off.
Good. So, have we done everything on the to-do list here?
Yeah, we'd love to have a short executive session.
All right, so, we're trying, so I guess I have to read this thing at the bottom here?
Yes, please.
All right, so we're going to move into executive session for Mass General Laws, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A two. To conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body and not to return to open session, and the chair so declines.
Need a motion. So, so moved, so moved.
Okay, a second on that?
Second.
Second.
All right. All in favor? Anne?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And John says yes. Okay, great. So, we will move to, what?
The entire side?
Town administrator is says is a short executive session. I'll be the judge of that.